Yes, Mayor, thank you. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. The time is now 7:51. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issue of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Park.
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for June 26, 2017, and August 1st, 2017. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Communications Correspondents?
The Academic Booster Club has submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their wine tasting event on Saturday, October 14th, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Nutley Museum on 65 Church Street. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Bevel Columbus Day Committee has submitted an event application to hold the Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Parade along Franklin Avenue on Sunday, October 8th, 2017, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
We're going to move the agenda around a little bit. We're going to go right to the municipal budget amendment. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Tonight, we're introducing an amendment to the municipal budget for 2017 that was originally introduced in March of this year, on the 21st. We have been notified by the state that our anticipated aid under the transitional aid formula has been very significantly reduced. Last year, we received 5.5 million of that aid. We were notified by a certified letter that that aid has now been reduced to $2,625,000, or roughly a $2.8 million cut in our aid year over year. We have been, as a board, and working together, very active with the school board, addressing what the consequences are of that adjustment. 825,000 of that loss was anticipated in the budget because we did not introduce with 5.5 million dollars worth of aid. We only introduced with 4.6 to 5 million dollars worth of aid. So the remaining 2 million is something that we have to address in time to have action so that the taxpayers of Nutley don't absorb the full amount of that in the November tax bill, which would be a very significant increase to the November bills. So tonight's budget amendment recognizes the state taking action to reduce our aid. I want to share with you that our negotiations with the state have been daily and ongoing to try and recoup some of the aid that was lost. We've been very successful in advising them of the consequences and the implications associated with that aid, especially to the implications for our schoolchildren as a result. So I am not prepared to discuss any changes in the aid number tonight, but I am continuing to work this week with the state to do so. To recognize, though, that we do have to take action, tonight's budget amendment does a few other things. First, in losing 2 million dollars, the municipal portion of that aid loss is $701,000. We have taken action as a board, working together, to absorb that full amount of that $700,000 loss. So at the municipal portion of a tax bill, because tax bills are divided between municipal, school, and county, we will not have to have any adjustment to the municipal portion of the bill for November because we've been able to offset the effect of the aid loss for this year. The second piece that I want to share is that we also have had very active and ongoing negotiations with the school board, and through those discussions, that we've been able to reduce the current portion of their aid loss, which is 900. Their aid loss portion was $967,000. We've been able to reduce that by $467,000. The areas that are currently being worked on is to find ways to adjust for the additional half a million dollars worth of school aid loss, as well as to work with the county, to work with a solution so that they recognize that while we didn't get the aid, we do not have to give them their share, which is equivalent of $331,000. So in total, of the 2 million dollars of aid loss that we were notified in this second go-around, we've been able to currently absorb approximately 1.2 million of that. We are currently working to find ways to absorb the balance of that for this year. What's important about it is that we are taking action as a board. The financial outlook and the picture for Nutley since the closure of Roche has been very complex. We've been managing it at multiple levels. One was to actually, for the first time in the state of New Jersey, negotiate an aid formula that gives us 100 percent reimbursement for the monies that were lost at Hoffmann-Laroche. So instead of just getting a municipal portion, we were able to get 100 percent reimbursement for that loss since 2013. This year, we obviously have experienced a reduction in that experience. The second piece of that is, as everyone has noticed, there has been new development in town, and the benefit of that has been to increase the assessable value of the town by over $70 million since 2013, which actually has produced new taxpayer revenue to the tune of $2.2 million annually. So rather, again, part of the management of this has been to figure out ways to attract new taxpayers so that the current taxpayer base is in burden with that loss, and we've been successful in managing our way through that. More needs to be done, but it is an ongoing process. We will now face the next step, which is while we will get through 2017 and manage our way through that, it doesn't eliminate the need to extensively look at the structure of our operations for 2018. And as the commissioners and I have been discussing is that all options are on the table, nothing's excluded. And that's including personnel, structure of operations, and so on, so that while we have to wait some time for the Hoffmann-Laroche property to convert and come online, that we are managing our way through that so we're not passing the full burden of that onto existing taxpayers. So tonight, we are introducing a budget amendment. We expect to hold a public hearing on the amendment next Monday evening, and hopefully before then, we'll be in a position to further discuss what our progress has been with the state in recouping some of the aid that we have lost. Before we move, Commissioners, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner, Mayor, any further comments you'd like to add? Be my guest.
I'll start off. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans from working from a hospital room and not only preparing this budget, but in talks with the state. I can tell you that this Board of Commissioners, along with the school board, are going to do everything in their power to mitigate adding any costs to the taxpayer. That's going to take some yeoman's work for this year, and even a lot more work next year. So I'd like to thank the school board who's here tonight. We have President Dan Carnesella, and we have Dr. Glazer here, the Superintendent of Schools, Charlie Kozinski, and Brenda Sherman. I'd like to thank you for your help. I'll pass it on to the other Commissioners, but I will leave it up to you guys if you wanted to say a few words after the Commissioners are done. Commissioner Tucci?
You're fading in and out, but I'd just like to echo what was already said, that we still have a lot of hard work ahead of us. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for their cooperation, and I know they're going to continue to look for ways to help so that we can reduce this burden on our taxpayers, because the last thing in the world we ever want to do is tax our good Nutley people out of town. So I commend everyone for all of their hard work in getting us to this point and helping us get through 2017 and 2018, I'm sure will be a challenge that we will all meet together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracco?
Thank you. I don't want to be redundant up here, but I would like to thank Dr. Glazer and the Board of Education for coming and participating in, you know, this very not pleasant procedure that we've been doing the last few months. I think, and I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Evans, too. I've had a lot of conversations from your hospital bed as well, and you did an excellent job, and I think it could have been a lot worse also. But I really think the people of Nutley are really at that height of what we could keep sending as far as taxes are concerned. And I know Commissioner Evans touched on the development in town a little bit, but I think that as a board, we need to have one voice and really tell the public what the whole story is, you know, at a future date like we discussed in the back, as far as why we're developing and what we're trying to do to keep the taxes at bay because it is hurting a lot of people in our town. And like the mayor said, we are committed to keeping Nutley people here and doing whatever it takes to put the taxpayer first, and I know I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers? None of us sitting up here, and especially myself, anticipated what we're facing in the future. I said a few weeks ago that we're going to be facing some very, very difficult times, and it may be very, very painful. But saying that, I take personal comfort in knowing that I'm working with a group of individuals, including the school board, who are cognizant of the fact that the decisions we make are going to have a profound, profound effect on the future of this town and on our children and grandchildren. So I just want to make you aware, as my colleagues have, that you're really in the best hands. And you know what, Commissioner Evans? I'm going to be redundant, but I have to say, you've done a great job. I mean, through your challenges that you have now, I appreciate the work you're doing and my colleagues. But I'm going to ask the public, especially those watching, to do us a favor, and this is so critically important, you could help us. In a day and age of social media, we have too many people spreading rumors, too many people speculating, too many people posting things on social media platforms that are not true, that are ugly, that are unwarranted, that are absolutely horrific. And these individuals, what they're doing is, they're causing a segment of our population, and particularly our senior citizens, and those individuals out of work. They're causing a lot of anxiety that's developing, and whether you believe it or not, I can tell you it's true, I am head of the Health Department, causing unnecessary health problems for people, emotional problems, because they read this stuff, and it begins to create and snowball something that we don't need, and frankly, that I don't want. So here's how you can help us. If you read something on anybody's blog or any social media platform, please make a telephone call to any one of us. Make a telephone call, if I may, Superintendent, to the Superintendent of Schools or any school board member. Make that call so you get the facts. It is very, very important that you do that as we move forward. So that's how you can help us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. School board, say a couple words. As they make their way up, I'd just say, you know, they've been very, the school board has been very helpful in trying to resolve this issue. This is one tax dollar. Comes out, it doesn't matter if it comes out of the left pocket or the right pockets, coming out of the pocket. So, Mr. Carnesella?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I just wanted to say, we work closely together. When we found out from the Commissioners that this was the plight in front of us, we all gathered together and said that we will certainly stand together and do what we can to make sure that we can put the equity behind our voice and make sure that we can balance with taxpayers and make sure that we don't deliver any more increases than we're all feeling now. We try to balance that equity with the things that we need, and hopefully, together, we'll continue to move forward and do the things that we need to make sure that Nutley is what we started, and it's going to continue to be what we've always anticipated it to be. Anybody else like to say a few words?
We have our board meeting next Monday night also, so we aren't able to be with you. When you do your budget meeting on September 11th, we'll have our Board of Education meeting, but if there's anything we can do, or if you need us to send somebody over to be here, just let us know, and we'd be happy to do whatever we can to help you.
Thank you for cooperating with us. Appreciate it.
So I'm going to continue to read on. Just a point, my health has been referred to a couple times. I am in good health. I had a medical issue earlier this year that required me to have a stem cell transplant. I'm in a very fortunate category, as I happen to be an identical twin, and my brother is a 99.9 percent DNA match to me. It's a one in 241 million to one shot. So I've actually have taken some very aggressive action for prevention purposes. So I'm wearing a hat because my hair is a little short these days, but it will grow back. But overall, the response has been very well, everybody's very pleased.
You think she's going to ask?
And I am, you know, every day, I'm being told that I'm going to be around for a very long time. So thank you for your, all of your interest, being in the hospital. I need something to work on because it's boring to be there. But I know, I just want to say thank you to everyone because I've received a lot of inquiries about my health, people are caring, and I just want to thank everyone for their support and for their caring. My family has been wonderful. My brother, as I tell him, and we joke about this, I said, "You saved my life," and he said, "Yes, and I make you pay for that the rest of your life." So we're in a very good, very good place. So I'm feeling good. I'm going to gain a couple pounds, I'm going to enjoy a Peroni pretty soon, and we'll get this behind us. So now on to the budget amendment. Whereas, the local municipal budget for the year 2017 was approved on the 21st day of March 2017, and whereas, the public hearing on said budget had been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget. The budget reflects that our Section B, total state aid without offsetting appropriation, goes from $7,322,630,000 to $5,322,630,000. That our special items of revenue go from $1,2,435,000 to $2,181,124,000. Our miscellaneous revenue goes from $9,772,065,000 to $8,949,854,000. Our total revenues from, changes from $56,426,926,000 to $55,128,715,000. Our operations, other operations, changes from $7,779,501,000 to $6,481,290,000. And our general appropriation changes from $52,117,474,000 to $50,819,263,000 for a general total appropriation of, change from $56,426,926,000 to $2,555,128,715,000. All right, be it further resolved that three copies of this resolution be filed with the Office of the Director of Local Governmental Services for his certification of the local budget so amended. Be it further resolved that this complete amendment, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48, 4 dot 9, be published in the Nutley Sun in the issue of the September, was issued in the September 7th issue, excuse me, published in the Nutley Sun in the issue of September 7th, 2017, and that said publication contain a notice of public hearing on said amendment to be held in the municipal building, September 11th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye, on introduction.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, on introduction.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci, are you going to stay on or are you going to drop?
I'm dropping off. Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
For joining us. Okay, we'll go to reports. Commissioner Tucci has a report for shade tree for the month of July. And we'll go to bills.
Yes, Mayor. Bill lists for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, Public Affairs, $95,998.90. Revenue and Finance, $3,033,295.38. Public Safety, $21,583.64. Public Works, $199,502.68. Parks and Public Property, $740,831.64. Total Payroll, $811,444.70, for a grand total of $4,902,656.94.
Move the bills?
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Park?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
For E. Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have a few questions on the amendment, if I can ask. I'm not sure of this appropriate time. I spoke to Ms. Costa prior to the meeting, she was very helpful, thank you. But since you made a few statements, I just wanted some clarification. Is that okay? Is this a good time to ask?
Well, we had an introduction tonight, the public hearing on that is next Monday.
I'll come back Monday and ask all the questions, if you want. I just wanted to try and get a clarification on that.
Happy to clarify.
In, I'll be brief. In here, it's, you have the $2 million of a loss from the initial to now, and if I understood you correctly, you said that that was going to be divided three ways between the county, school board, and?
Correct.
Commissioner. Is that reflected, the actual number that we're getting, is that actually reflected here? Because you're saying 2 million, and it's 2 million among two other entities.
Correct. What happens is, in the way the model of the budget works on the revenue side, we have to reflect the total aid that we're getting in, and on the appropriation side, we have to reflect the appropriation that goes to the county and to the school.
So is that reflected someplace else in the document?
Yes, absolutely.
It is?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll find out a little later. In here, one thing I did notice is that there was zeros on the introductions for two items that were just below it, and crossing guards, I believe, is one of them. And now we have to pick up, it's pretty close to half a million dollars. Did we pick that up as an additional expense on this document?
No, actually, that's actually a cost that we incur in the municipal appropriation, but in order to address that, the school board has provided, is actually providing us reimbursement for that cost, and they're absorbing that in their existing budget, so...
Are they absorbing it, or we absorbing it?
They are.
They are? Then is there a reason that it's reflected on the municipal side?
Yes, because the only way to reflect that is that they actually have to give us the money for that, which only can come in as a revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only?
Shade Trees, Thomas Menard, 104 Stanley Ave. I have a question about a shade tree that I'm trying to get cut down in my backyard. Is this the appropriate time for that?
Not really.
Not really.
Sorry about that. We'll be at the end of the meeting, all right?
All right, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board on agenda items only? Seeing long, can I have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Board of Commissioner announcements, any announcements?
The only announcement I have, Mayor, is that I know we probably all attended a couple wakes of Mr. Colicchio and Ernie Capello this week, and I have to tell you, it's really those men of that generation that really made this country what it is, and I think it would be remiss not to mention their names at the board meeting tonight because they were really salt in their kind of guise and what Nutley's all about, so I'd just like to mention them tonight, thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would just echo that. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the services, but nonetheless, I think, Commissioner, I agree with you, it's important to recognize their contribution.
Ordinance introductions. I'm going to introduce Commissioner Tucci's ordinance, ordinance number 3369, Barton Bond Ordinance, Providing for the Improvement of Father Glotzbach Soccer Field, In and By the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, Appropriating $350,115 thereof and Authorizing the Issuance of $87,529 bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the costs thereof. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held on the second reading on October 3rd, 2017. I move the ordinance. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers? Ordinance number 3368, in ordinance to amend the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 217, entitled Animals, to add Article 6, entitled Sale of Dogs and Cats. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on October 3rd, 2017. So moved. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolutions, Commissioner Rogers? Resolution number 182-17 is recognizing the month of September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. So moved. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution is 183-17, before I read it. This is an example of how the school board and the township are working together to save tax dollars and to maintain some of the critical services we have, so I want to thank the school board for the work you're doing with us. Whereas NJSA 48, 61-1, the Uniform Shared Services and Consolidation Act authorizes and empowers local units to enter into agreements with other local entities regarding shared services, and whereas the township and the Board of Education recognize the value of inter-local cooperation as a way of reducing duplication and overlap of services, and whereas the township and the Board of Education have previously entered into such an agreement in order to define the respective rights and obligations of the township and the Board of Education regarding the employ of a physician, school physician, to provide health services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Board of Education wish to extend the existing shared services agreement for physician, school physician services for the period of September 1, 2017, through August 31st, 2018, for which the township will be compensated $7,000 to be paid in 10 equal installments of $700.
Block ninety-seven hundred dot one oh one for five hundred, for five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Block seventy-five hundred, lot five, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Block five oh two dot sixteen dot zero zero one, five hundred and five dollars. Block seventy-five oh one dot five, one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Block sixty-six oh three, lot eighteen, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Block seven oh two, seventy-two oh two, lot eighteen, for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies in the amount of four thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas there exist various reserves on the balance sheet of the current fund, and whereas the fund creating these reserves has been investigated and has been determined that these reserves should be canceled, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies in the amount of four thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas there exists various reserves on the balance sheet of the current fund, and whereas the fund creating these reserves has been investigated and has been determined that these reserves should be canceled, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that the following reserve balance in the amount of seven hundred and one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars be and is hereby canceled, reserved for pending tax appeals, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, this is Resolution one-ninety-one dash seventeen. I won't read the whole thing, but this is designed for Knockout Opium Day. Whereas New Jersey is in the midst of a life-threatening opioid abuse epidemic, and whereas the Partnership for Drug-Free, New Jersey has designated October sixth, two thousand and seventeen, as Knockout Opium Abuse Day. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
This is Resolution number one-ninety-two dash seventeen, resolution approving participation with the State of New Jersey Federal Grant Program administered by the Department of Law and Public Safety. Whereas the Township of Nutley Police Department has applied for funds in the amount of eight hundred and one dollars from the Detective Matthew L. Tarantino Community Police Grant Program. Whereas the Nutley Police Department has requested these funds to be used for the police and the lunch in school programs, which is our pals. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas a raffle application has been received from the following organization, Nutley Rotary, Rotary Club of Nutley, license number forty-two dash seventeen, authorized fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Thomas Bernard, one oh four Stanley Ave. I have a large tree in my backyard that I submitted a permit to have removed for safety reasons, and it was denied, and I don't think that was right to do. So I don't know if this is the right forum to address that, but I would like to get approval to remove that tree.
Commissioner Tucci is not here presently tonight, so we'll pass that on to him, and hopefully he'll get back to you, all right?
I give you permission.
Thank you, Mr. Jena Tempo. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, my name is Mark Fogo, residing at five zero one Prospect Street. I first want to say I'm, it's one of my first meetings, and watching the proceedings and the way that you gentlemen are handling something really so important to the town, I'm very impressed, so thank you. And that said, what I'm going to talk about is, seems awfully minor in that regard. Part of the township has regarding noise, four-six-zero dash nine, four-six-zero dash eleven, has to do with the leaf blowers or the landscapers and the time that they're allowed to start their work. Right now, the code is written from, they can't work from ten P M. to seven A M. And if any of you have experienced these leaf blowers going off at seven o'clock in the morning right in front of your home, so I've come before the Board to ask to consider moving it. I've made a number of phone calls, I'm not sure, I guess it was Public Affairs, Parks. It used to be eight-thirty, if I understand, and a number of years ago, it looks like it was two thousand and three that it was changed to seven A M. So I come before the Board to ask if you can consider making that change, too.
We'll certainly take that under advisement, all right? Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing that. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, last time I was up here last meeting, I had asked if the opers were going to be answered for the fire engine, and they're being delayed, I understand now. Where is the actual fire engine located right now?
Excuse me?
Where is the fire engine located right now? I received an email stating that the insurance company moved it, and you guys have no idea where it is.
That may be, Mr. Moore. I don't know where it is.
If, if we're under the JIP, the Joint Insurance Fund, I believe we're self-insured. Who's the insurance company?
Mr. Jena Tempo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once the insurance company took over the vehicle and signed it over...
Thank you. Once the insurance company took over the vehicle and we signed it over to them, it's totally out of our hands. We have no idea where it is.
Who's the insurance company? I thought, I thought under the JIP we were self-insured.
The JIP insured is part of it. There's separate automobile coverage. There's a lot of different layers of coverage that the township has. We filed a claim, they, they paid the claim, they took control of the vehicle, I assume for scrap, but I don't know.
As in, if it's going to be sold for scrap, doesn't it have to be done through an ordinance or...
Yes, but we don't own it anymore. It's not our vehicle anymore. We don't have any control over it.
How did, how was it relinquished? I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
The same way I told you in the email, Mr. Moore, we signed over the vehicle to them by giving them the title. We don't own it anymore.
Who was the insurance company?
I don't have the name of the insurance.
Oh, you don't have the insurance company. So...
What do you want me to tell you? You want me to get it?
No, no, actually, no, actually...
I'll find the name of the insurance company before you. Just ask me, and I'll get it.
I already did. I put it in Oprah, and everything's being delayed.
No, it's not.
Okay, so then, then we do last week, so then...
Okay.
Okay, that there is a delay.
Sure.
Okay. And you have, isn't that supposed to be done by a motion? I believe it is, that you want to sell it off, or did you get...
No, we didn't sell it off. We had an insurance claim.
You just relinquished it. So we lost everything on that fire engine.
I didn't say that.
Well, did we receive any funds from the fire engine?
Yes, we, we had a claim. You asked for the documents, we're going to give them to you. We don't have all the documents, Mr. Moore. The things that you asked for, some of them we have, some of them we don't. We're working with the Clerk's office to try to get you those documents, and the Fire Department, who was involved in the, in the insurance claim. So I'm trying to gather those documents for you. I have a meeting tomorrow with a representative of the Fire Department who's been away for three weeks, who handled the claim. I'm meeting with him at ten o'clock tomorrow morning. We'll get you the documents that you have asked for, I promise you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none? Make a motion that we close public portion?
Move it.
Get my way up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jeff Morton, twenty-one ninety-five U.S. Highway twenty-two, Union, New Jersey. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is Jeff Morton. I'm president of Shakopee Pet Stores here in New Jersey, and also the owner of the Shakopee Center for Rescue and Adoption, a five oh one C three nonprofit animal shelter. Also a member of the Pet Industry Joint Advisory Council, which is the pet industry's advocate for responsible pet ownership. I'm also a certified animal control officer and cruelty investigator. Obviously, I'm here regarding the pet store ordinance that you wish to introduce tonight. And let me preface by telling you that it is already legal for a New Jersey pet store to purchase from a puppy mill, despite what the animal activists might say. I need to repeat that because many times it is, it is not understood. It is already illegal in the state of New Jersey for a New Jersey pet store to purchase from a puppy mill. All those terrible pictures showing animals living in deplorable conditions do not apply to pet stores in two thousand and seventeen. Animal extremists are trying to convince you that every single dog in a pet store is from a horrible and faraway place with barely minimum living conditions, that federal and state animal welfare laws are weak, that federal and state inspectors don't know what they're doing. I have literally visited hundreds of breeders in my twenty-five-year career. I know where our dogs come from, and I'm very proud of these hard work in American families. Please do not believe the lies of the animal rights extremist, whose real goal is to end animal ownership in America. I brought some pictures with me of some USDA licensed and inspected kennels. The preamble of your proposed ordinance states that the town of Nutley wants to protect the residents of Nutley who may buy a dog from a pet shop. I have brought with me a list of eighty-eight Nutley residents who have bought a dog from Shakopee over the past several years. Although I cannot introduce that in a public forum due to privacy issues, I will assume that these many residents have not been beating down your doors complaining about their animals. Only the Humane Society and their lobbyists have approached you. If this ordinance is passed, it will not do anything to protect their residents. When Nutley residents choose to purchase a family companion from us, they're protected by the local Health Department, the State Health Department, the Division of Consumer Affairs, and by the strongest consumer protection laws in the United States here in New Jersey. The proposed preamble also reads that it will help prevent inhumane breeding conditions. Now, I'm a dog breeder. I bred Saint Bernards for ten years, and I breed French Bulldogs currently. Please explain to me how this ordinance accomplishes that goal, inhumane breeding conditions. If I breed a chocolate lab to a yellow lab, is that inhumane? If I breed a miniature dapple dachshund to a standard red smoothcoat dachshund, is that inhumane? How about a miniature poodle to a golden retriever? Is that inhumane? Are you trying to regulate the ovulation cycle of a female dog in Iowa? If this council collectively cannot answer these easy canine breeding questions, then I would respectfully ask that you continue to educate yourselves about canine breeding and withdraw this ordinance from consideration. I only point out these grossly incorrect verbiage in the preamble because it was not written by a council member to truly address the needs of the Nutley community. It was drafted by animal rights extremists using feel-good words to pull on your heartstrings. We're all against bad dog breeders, but pet sale bans have not closed a single one. Over three hundred and fifty-five New Jersey towns have said no to such ordinances being introduced, and I'm here to also ask you to say no. I have another flyer here. I've emailed this to the town council as well, indicating a lot of the regulations that New Jersey pet stores require to follow. Thank you. New Jersey pet stores are the most highly regulated source of companion dogs in the United States. We're number one in regulation in New Jersey. I know it's not a big surprise, but we're number one in regulation. Pet stores are required to provide detailed information on the dog breeder and even the distributor and/or transporter. Pet stores are required to have detailed United States Department of Agriculture inspection reports available for review. We're also regulated by local health departments, by Division of Consumer Affairs. Pet stores are required to have our animals examined every fourteen days by a New Jersey licensed veterinarian. By the way, do you know how often an animal sheltered dog needs to be seen by a veterinarian? Once a year.
Could you wrap it up? Five minutes are up.
I've learned a lot before testifying before councils such as yours. I've learned that the rules of evidence do not apply. The activists wave a picture of a distressed dog and say, ban this, close the store, and all our problems will be solved. And that is simply not the case. Donate more money, all this will end. The Humane Society's next agenda is meatless Mondays and vegan lunches for schoolchildren. Please understand who is behind the proposing of this ordinance.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Janice Fisher, Morris Avenue, Manasquon, New Jersey, and I coordinate the Puppy Mill Awareness Campaign for Friends of Animals United, New Jersey. Thank you for introducing the pet store ordinance. I hadn't planned to say anything other than that tonight, but after hearing the last person speak, I want to mention that I've worked with many pet store customers over the years who've been victims of unscrupulous pet stores. For many years, these New Jersey pet stores kept their customers in the dark as to where their puppies come from. As a matter of fact, in two thousand and fifteen, transparency had to be legislated, and this legislation was strongly opposed by the pet store industry. It makes you wonder why. Even after the law took effect, twenty-six out of twenty-nine New Jersey pet stores last year were fined by the Division of Consumer Affairs for failing to comply with the law. I don't want to go head-to-head with any particular pet store, but the person up here speaking was fined twenty-five thousand dollars last year for failing to notify his customers who his breeders were. The pet store industry is going to continue to tell you that local ordinances aren't necessary because New Jersey has the toughest laws in the nation, but they won't tell you But they won't tell you that the state has failed miserably in enforcing the most important aspect of the law, and that is where pet store puppies come from. Last year, our group in the Humane Society of the United States did research on every breeder for each pet store in New Jersey. And we found that the vast majority of pet stores were sourcing from puppies with severe Animal Welfare Act violations, violations that would make the pet store customers cringe if they knew the truth. And unfortunately now, if the state were to try to regulate pet store where pet stores get their puppies, they no longer can because the USDA, as of the beginning of this year, removed all of their breeder inspection reports from their website. So we're back to no transparency, no ability to research, no ability to regulate where pet store puppies come from. And that will create an inherent risk for any town that licenses a pet store that sells puppies and kittens because bad breeders equal sick puppies. And sick puppies have wreaked havoc on many towns in New Jersey recently. You may or may not know that many towns have struggled with problematic pet stores who have violated local health codes, consumer fraud laws, and cruelty laws. They've expended an exorbitant amount of money, taxpayer dollars, on multiple investigations, license revocation proceedings, and court hearings. In fact, East Hanover, their legal fees alone were $90,000. It's such a waste of taxpayer dollars. And it makes me wonder, why does a town need a pet store that sells puppies and kittens when we have so many reputable breeders, small breeders in New Jersey, shelters, and rescue organizations from which to get a pet? 107 towns so far have adopted pet store ordinances. It's not the other way around that 350 have not because they haven't even been approached. We're moving slowly on this. I want to make certain that you know that these ordinances have not been legally challenged in New Jersey, despite the first ordinance being adopted five years ago. Of all the ordinances that were adopted across the nation, only six have been legally challenged, and all have been upheld in the court, even on appeal. I want to mention that 24 out of 25 of the largest pet store chains in the country do not sell puppies and kittens because they know it's an inhumane model of doing business. And people, as they become more educated, are opposed to this type of business. I'm urging Nutley to adopt this ordinance next week. I'm urging them to understand that the laws in effect in New Jersey are not being enforced the way that they should. I have in my hands the inspection reports for the individual who just spoke for 2015. If I were able to get the new reports, if the USDA hadn't removed those reports from the website citing privacy concerns for the breeders, I would be presenting them. This is it. These are his inspection reports. I'm not going to read these violations to you. I think you can only imagine. I think we did present Commissioner Rogers with some of them.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you. Again, I just hope that you will consider adopting the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Renee White, 2195 Route 22 in Union. I would just... My name is Renee, and I'm in recovery. And I work for Shakippaw. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my life and my journey and how I ended up in Shakippaw. I had an opiate addiction for over 27 years, right? I'm 51 years old. I had an opiate addiction for 21 years, 27 years, rather. And I've been to prison twice. I've been on probation. Nothing worked. I lost custody of my child. Nothing worked. I couldn't get clean for anything, you know? Finally, three years ago, last week, made three years, three years ago, I made the decision to turn my life around, right? So what did I need to do to do this? You know, it's not easy for somebody that's been in addiction for many years to even see a light at the end of the tunnel, you know? And there's not many people that are willing to help us recovering addicts, you know? I went to a halfway house, right? A rehabilitation center, where I met Mr. Morton's stepdaughter. Together, we were recovering, you know? So with that, and, you know, they teach you that you need to live on the outside, right? Because you're safe inside of rehab. So in order to do that, I had to get a job. I had to do all these different things, you know? I had to change my behaviors. I had to learn how to be responsible. And Mr. Morton gave me a job at Shakippaw, which I have now been employed there for two years, you know? This man has taught me... I'm ready to cry. ...taught me how to be independent, responsible, dependable, reliable. Without Shakippaw giving me a second chance at life, I don't know where I would be today, you know? Because if you can't see some kind of light at the end of a tunnel, you're not going to go. And as far as our puppies go, I work the kennel, okay? And I... It ain't about the paycheck, okay? I work hard, and these puppies come in healthy, happy, beautiful. I take care of them. I groom them. I bathe them. I walk them. You know, believe it or not, and you can laugh if you want to, I sing to them, okay? I hold them, and I walk around, and I dance with them. Some people think I'm a little crazy. But however, my love for animals... Sometimes I love animals more than I love people, you know? Because they have unconditional love. You know, you treat them well, they treat you well. And, you know, I don't want to hold up the time. I just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, people like Mr. Morton, right, gave me a chance. And with that, now I'm a respectable member of society. I can stand here at this courtroom and be a respectable member of society today. And I don't know if I could be that if it wasn't for my second chance at life. And that's all I really wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your journey with us. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Hi, Larry Cohen. I live in Fanwood, New Jersey. I'm a volunteer with the Humane Society of the United States. I also want to thank you for proposing this ordinance. Here's what we know. In 2015, 19 New Jersey pet stores purchased puppies from USDA breeders with multiple and severe violations, which state law prohibits. In January 2016, 26 pet stores were fined by the state for violation of the Pet Purchase Protection Act. In the past two years, 13 pet stores have been closed by the Department of Health, the municipality they operate in, or voluntarily after being fined by the state. This is a real issue. This is not a fantasy. This is not something that people are going around making up. The state of California, perhaps this week, is going to vote on this to prohibit retail pet store sales in the entire state. Massachusetts has introduced a similar law. New Hampshire is considering one after a puppy mill was discovered in a mansion. You talk about beautiful pictures. Can you see this? Inside, 84 Great Danes living in filth. So it's not about the pictures. It's not about an individual store. Although I'm very surprised that Mr. Morton wants to make it about his store. It baffles me that somebody who claims to be an animal cruelty officer would do business with a woman who admitted on her own vet report that she shot her dogs in the head. It is about real problems that exist. And it's about the way we, as people and as a society, view these animals. He'll sometimes talk about that we don't have a stake in this. The creatures that have a stake in this can't come up here and speak for themselves. So we're here representing them. And the question becomes, what do you, as a town, want to do in what little capacity you have to make this world a better place for animals, for the people who love them, for the people who want to own them and have them healthy and happy? I've been through your code, your town code. And from the comprehensive anti-smoking ordinances that you have to the ordinance you have protecting consumers concerning milk, I see you as a very compassionate council. You seem to care very deeply about your responsibility to protect your citizens. In fact, your ordinance about animals, the shelter and care of animals, has provisions in it that exceed those of the Animal Welfare Act. So were you not to take action, were you to allow a pet store to come in here and sell puppies, you would be allowing business to be done in this city whereby dogs were coming in here that were raised in conditions worse than what you mandate your own townspeople do, based upon your very comprehensive and compassionate Chapter 217, the Shelter and Care of Animals? It's a small thing that we can do, and it's a question of whether or not we consider these creatures living, feeling things, or whether we consider them furniture or some other inanimate object. And again, it's not about an individual store. Sure, there are dogs that arrive happy and healthy. What about the dogs that never make it? What about the collateral damage? What is acceptable on the part of these owners and breeders in terms of deaths and maimings and lifelong illnesses? What's acceptable so that you or I could spend $3,000 for a shih-tzu that we could get from any reputable breeder? Again, thank you so much for considering this, and I hope you'll move forward with adopting this.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Hi, guys. My name is Kristi. I also work at Shakippaw on Route 22 in Union.
Let's try not to be redundant, okay?
I'm going to be quick. You know, I have a similar story. I just... I've been hired and I've been given a second chance. I'm not going to go into all that. However, you know, I'm a little offended because, you know, I rely on Jeff to do the right thing so that I can keep my job. I take care of my five-year-old daughter by myself. I rely on this job. This job allows me to take care of myself. I, too, worked in the back. And I don't know of any shih-tzus that were $3,000. You'd be more than happy to come check that out. But I watch the puppies come in. We keep all the reports up. There's never a cage without any information on it. Like, yeah, okay, there's places that have been shut down because they don't follow the rules. He's still open for a reason. I mean, what do we have to do here? Get golden retrievers from Craigslist from people that with no warranties, no background? Why not come and get from a reputable breeder? And I don't know about not seeing reports on the USDA website because I've worked with the hiring manager, and I've seen him research breeders on the website. And I've seen violations. And I've seen him turn down $25 dogs people are trying to sell from puppy mills, okay? So this... It just enrages me because we do the right thing. And just because some people don't doesn't mean that everybody does it. So, you know, just do a little more research. Not everybody comes from a puppy mill.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Good evening. My name is Jean Clayton. I live on Holly Road in Marlton, New Jersey. I just wanted to make this short and brief. We just heard from the owner of Shakippaw that he runs a very good business. He doesn't violate the law. He has healthy puppies in his store. The fact is, his store is one of the worst in the state. His words ring hollow. The USDA is tasked with inspecting dog breeders at least once a year. When they find a violation, they are cited. This violation and the law they use only enforce the bare minimum standards of care for the maintenance and the kennels. Female dogs are bred twice a year until they are unable to breed. They are then disposed of by whatever means the kennel owner chooses. Pet stores in New Jersey are not allowed to purchase from breeders with three or more indirect violations from the USDA inspection or one direct violation. And that is for the past two years in the kennel from when they buy the dog. But they do. As Janice pointed out, I guess we have the same thing. This is the book of violations for Shakippaw for 2015. That year... That year, he sourced from 42 breeders that had violations. 19 of them had serious violations that is against the law for a pet owner in this state, a pet store owner in this state, to purchase from that breeder. He wasn't alone. I filed 21 complaints to Consumer Affairs for 2015 for just about every store in this state for violations of the Pet Protection Act. I'd also like to mention that Shakippaw and Union in 2015 were inspected by the Consumer Affairs Office. The inspector who went out there noted in her report that while she was there, an employee was going around changing cards, adding things to cards, removing cards. She was told to stop. About 10 minutes later, the inspector saw another employee in that store doing the same thing. And they were told to stop until the inspection was over. And as far as the USDA reports, we used to get... Again, Janice touched on that. But the old reports used to give us total information on every breeder that we looked up. This is a sample of a new report. You get the violation. Here's one even better. It lists every violation the breeder had. The problem is, there's no breeder name up here. Everything is redacted. It says Stott City, Missouri, and the date of the inspection. And that is it. So how are we supposed to and/or how are they supposed to find out if a breeder is following the laws or not? So I just don't want you to be fooled that the USDA has their site back up online and we can check things out. We cannot. I just wanted to say that you look at all these records for 2015. And we keep saying 2015 because that is the only year we have to judge them on. That's the only year they were caught off guard because for the first time, they had to send a list of their breeders to the town that they are currently selling dogs in. That year, they were caught off guard because they posted a lot of breeders with problems. In 2016, their lists are totally different. But it doesn't matter because they know we can't look at them up. So they can write anything they want on those lists. 2015 was the only year we could check, the only year that I believe they listed their actual breeders.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Okay. I respectfully ask that you pass this ordinance to ban the sale of puppy mill puppies and kittens in Nutley. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Ellen Coyote from Hamilton. My grandparents have lived for decades in Nutley until they passed away. So I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to add my voice to, I hope you sincerely pass this ordinance. I've been a member of rescue groups for 41 years. I'm not an animal rights extremist. I believe... I love dogs. I wish everybody could have a dog. I am very unhappy with where dogs are sourced from. Even though puppy mills are legal, they shouldn't be. That's the problem. I've taken care of nearly 400 puppy mill dogs. Not one of them didn't have a series of parasites, open wounds, and other medical problems. It's not just breeding two dogs and breeding them every six months, which is pretty cruel because they get prolapsed uteruses and everything. They usually only have a lifespan of five years. They don't last very long. And they're fed very poor diets. They're only required to be in cages six inches bigger than them. And I can go through a litany of the cruelty that the Animal Welfare Act of 1966 is supposed to address, but does not because the USDA, under the Plant Health Inspection Service, admits since 1992, the Office of Inspection General, they have done extensive reports. The latest one in 2010, which you can look up. They admit they don't enforce their policies because they're farmer-friendly, and it would take too many inspectors. They don't have the time or money. And it's just too much follow-through. And so the animals suffer. There's no such thing as a humane commercially-bred dog. If you can find me one, I'd love to see it. Because it's a nice fantasy story that the pet store owners put forth, but to me, it has no basis in reality. I've heard so many people with... When they buy the dogs, all the ailments they've had and the expenses that they've incurred. And many of them don't even follow through because they get such a hassle from the pet store. One elderly woman even had the cops called on her and thrown out. It's very hard to pursue your legal rights because most of them deny the Pet Protection Act and all the other consumer protections. So I'm pleased asking you to be part of stopping animal cruelty, saving taxpayers and consumers their hard-earned money, and stop putting to death less shelter and rescue animals simply for the crime of being homeless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to... Would anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Yeah. Carmine Alessio, 81 East Center Street. I'm just sitting here, and I'm a little confused about why all of a sudden the town of Nutley wants to sell dogs and cats at a pet store. But then I'm thinking back that I just saw on TV that maybe there's something a little bigger than we see. I'm going to tell you why. I heard, will know pretty much from watching on the news, that Puerto Rico is exporting like thousands and thousands of cats and dogs. And maybe there's some hidden facts here. Maybe the board's not familiar, or, you know, maybe we can get some kind of an answer out of this if it's going to be a way to filter these pets throughout the United States, which I kind of like have a kind of a heart towards it because when my daughter was like 12 years old, I went to a local pet store and I bought a beautiful Shetland, and when I got it home, it had epilepsy. So, you know, I kind of like pleaded with the owner. I says, you know, is this dog healthy? It seems to be sleeping. Oh, it's fine. It's fine. When I got the little dog home, it was, I took it to a vet. It was going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars to, you know, to treat this dog with epilepsy. So that's why my heart is like, kind of like, I have to come up here and like respond to what's going on because I'm trying to figure this out. And I do know that maybe it's some kind of a political agenda of why we're getting all these dogs and cats from Puerto Rico, and they have to go somewhere, so they have to be filtered through the system some way and somehow. And I am a dog and cat lover. Probably, you probably, just by looking at me, would say, hey, this guy. It's a fact. I love animals. And I'm kind of like upset about this because I think there's more to it than we know. So if this is the reason behind it, please, you know, like, don't go through with this ordinance. There's plenty of dogs and plenty of cats that need to be adopted, and I don't think that we should filter these animals through the system by some sneaky way, which I think this may be the reason why all of a sudden we want to open up some kind of a pet store in Nutley and sell all these animals. Now, this is like, you know, like, do we need this aggravation? I mean, I don't think so. So, you know, if somebody can answer my question, some of the experts out here, maybe, like, you know, I'd like to know why. Could the board answer anything here of why we all of a sudden want to adopt an ordinance to take, you know, sell cats and dogs?
It's actually an ordinance to actually prevent that, Mr. Alessio.
To prevent it?
Yes.
That'd be a wonderful thing. I mean, you know. So it's to prevent it.
Correct.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners? And listen, if you don't have anything new to add, please. It's getting late.
I know it is. My name is Barbara Reichman. I'm with the National Animal Interest Alliance. I volunteer for that organization in a lot of different ways. I wanted to discuss with you tonight one of our biggest projects, which is the Shelter Project. We collect and present to the public free of charge shelter intake and disposition statistics for cats and dogs from shelters and rescues across the country, including some of the largest states in our country. And what I can tell you from working on that for the past 10 years is that the notion that there is a national overpopulation of dogs specifically in this country is no longer the case. It was the case at some point, but it no longer is the case. I sent the board some, along with a letter, I sent you a variety of graphs for both the state of New Jersey and for Essex County to show you what the trend lines are like. And what you're looking at is not a burgeoning overpopulation problem. What you're looking at is a success story because our numbers, our impound numbers, have been so diminished over the past 20 years. Our euthanasias have dropped like a rock, and we see that in state after state after state across the country. When those numbers start to flatten out and you're wondering what's going on all of a sudden, what's happening in those states is that animals are being imported from other states. So yes, there are states, areas in our country where we have a surplus, but we have other portions of the country where we don't have enough dogs to satisfy the demand, and that includes in the Northeast, in the Middle Atlantic states, and in the Pacific Northwest. Colorado in 2015 imported from out-of-state over 28,000 dogs, and half of those were puppies under the age of 120 days. The demand for dogs has never been higher. The U.S. enjoys, back in 2012, the AVMA estimated that 36.7% of U.S. households owned dogs, and we have the highest dog-owning rate of any Western nation. And for those people who say that they love dogs, the biggest challenge here is to make sure that the source of the dogs that we want is reliable and constant. The APPA estimates that 89 million dogs are owned in this country, and if you just think about how many dogs need to be born to replace those who are lost through attrition, we're talking 7 million dogs in a year. Shelter and rescues don't have enough dogs in their system to be able to satisfy that. In 2015, licensed breeders from the USDA only made 292,000 puppies available for resale through pet stores nationwide. The AKC's registrations are going down. A third of people buy their dogs from friends and families, somebody you know down the street that has a litter, but that still is not enough. We are already working at a deficit. So in the crux of all of this emotion and discourse over all of this stuff is the question of where is the next generation of kids going to get their next dog? Where do we want them to get their next dog from? Our point of view is that everybody has a proper fit with a different animal. Some people love purebreds. Some people love Heinz 57s. Some people love dogs that are damaged and need to be reworked, just like there are some people who like to tinker on cars. Some people like Ferraris. Some people like Fords. It's not the position, our position is, is that it's not the job of any level of government to dictate to the people where they get their dogs from. That has to be their choice. We are all for education. We are all for promoting everybody to do a better job and not to fall back on the old things that happened 40 years ago. What hasn't been discussed here tonight is that Purdue University had a research study that they started several years ago using scientific methods to determine what changes could be made to professional breeders and their kennels to enhance the lives of the dogs that were in those kennels. That study is complete. They're releasing those.
Please wrap it up.
Yep. Professional breeders are eager to learn that information and to make things better. We need, as a community, again, not to enable those who are not doing a good job, but to raise everybody up, to make sure that that source is constant, that every family has the choice of where they can get their own pet, and to make sure that everybody's doing a better job because veterinary health moves forward like human health does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none. Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Just before we close, I, why are you looking at me like that, Commissioner? They can't, I waited to end so nobody could comment anymore of what I say. First of all, I didn't catch your name, the young lady that came up. Yeah, you?
Renee.
No, no.
Renee.
Renee, congratulations to you, what you did with this opium stuff because I know firsthand, being the Public Safety Director in Nutley, not too many people come back from that and overcome it. So God bless you and keep up the good work. I have to tell you, I've heard like a lot of different sides of this, and I'm getting the education myself up here tonight about this, and I, you know, Commissioner Rogers has really talked to me a lot about it too, and I want to commend you, Steve, because I know it's a very heated topic, it seems like. I just want to say that I think both sides have a lot of good points tonight, but I just would like to tell a story, being everybody was telling stories. You don't mind, do you, Commissioner Evans?
Is it going to be long?
No. Did you, you could set the five-minute timer. But, you know, I think that everyone in the room is really passionate for puppies. I think everybody shows a lot of love for them, and I have to just tell a story about my 21-year-old son that took a ride to Pennsylvania one day and came back with a puppy, and it was from a breeder. So when he came home, I wasn't too happy because we already had a dog at the time, but the dog was supposedly, he did the research and all that stuff, and it was a breeder, and he came, the dog came home loaded with fleas, some problems, I had to take the dog to the vet, all that stuff. And he felt so bad about the conditions, and again, this was from a breeder in Pennsylvania that he did the research on the computer and all that stuff about. You know, he felt so bad, he wound up going to get the dog's sister the next day. So I think there's a lot of truth to, that even with the breeder side of it, you know, if a breeder has a beautiful house and they have a couple kennels in the front and in the backwoods, they're doing these dogs dirty, so to speak, you know, how do we know that it's this, you know, because the pet owner, the pet store owners are allowing, you know, are feeding them to buy these dogs? So I got to tell you, at the end of the night, you know, it's, there's a lot to this stuff. And, you know, and something like this that sheds light on it, because I am a dog lover myself, is that, you know, I think controversy is good in this event, Commissioner Rogers, and that, you know, hopefully, the government will step in and really put, implement laws in effect for breeders and pet store owners in all aspects so these dogs aren't abused.
And at the end of the day, we represent the people of the township of Nutley. Now, before I introduce this ordinance, I did some research myself, and by the way, thank you all for coming. As the Commissioner said, it's healthy. This is what democracy is all about. And I did speak to a lot of residents regarding this ordinance, not hundreds, but enough, to convince me that they're in support of this. I don't think it's necessary to pack this hall, which I could very well pack it with 100 or so residents in support of it. That's not my style. My style is to hear everyone's argument. So the people are in support of this. I believe in this town. And one other thing I think it was important to say, personally, I don't like people labeled, all right? I don't like people being called animal activists, extremists, et cetera, et cetera, because they have a passion for something. I guess I would be one of those. I heard some criticisms, maybe not here, maybe tonight here, from someone, but other places about the Humane Society. I happen to have led a rescue team in Hurricane Katrina when that hit Louisiana, and the rescue team was paid for by the Humane Society. I brought some naval personnel and law enforcement officers with me in the Ninth Ward to do what? To save dogs, cats, animals that were drowning that had to be left behind. And I say that only for this reason. None of us up here take these things lightly. We know that laws and ordinances that we pass have to be reasonable and have to be in the best interest of the public. So I would say this, that as we move forward, I would, I would, I would just, look, I like debate and all that, but I just hope there comes a time when we could stick to facts and not label people extremists and activists because, as the Commissioner said, everyone has something to say. Everyone has passion for something. But I'm not going to drop this ordinance. I'm going to move it forward because I believe it's in the best interest of our township and the best interest of the overall picture regarding puppy mills. But it'll be up to my colleagues to decide in their hearts and in their minds what they believe is proper. But I want to thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the time is 9:16.
Good night, everybody.